Your Lord God, we're grateful to you for all that you have done for us. We ask that you continue to bless our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city attorney, and department heads of tonight as we make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything we do, we pray we be careful to give your name to glory, your name to honor, and your name to praise. But it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Welcome everybody here this evening. Glad to have you. I have a motion to approve the agenda. Take a motion second. All favoritism opposed. I have a motion to approve the minutes on the July 10th regular scheduled meeting. Take a motion second. All favoritism opposed. I have a few things. Kind of an update, nothing else. Lenny will have to help me with this, but let me start with, uh, we had three teams go to the World Series, two came back champions, one got knocked out.
Right. Two go to the World Series.
Two, two went to the World Series.
One won 10 in undergroup, Dixie girls softball, and 12 in undergroup, finished right up there.
Okay, we have one world champion.
Yeah.
Two, two that got knocked out. Okay. And three World Series teams.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Well, congratulations to all of them. Uh, also, you know, we hosted the, uh, softball tournament, I can't remember the age groups, but a huge success for us. I think Lynn told me a few days, we had over a thousand people per day on a few little days out there. Testament our facilities out there and, uh, and the staff that, that runs. I want to thank all y'all involved and volunteers to help make that success that it was. Um, I, they, Chief gave me an opportunity to address the police department last year. It's been a number of years since I've done so. Thought it's long overdue. Uh, really impressed with the officers. Uh, and really kind of awestruck by what they gotta go through with their paperwork. That's what I noticed, what they were having to do and meet for. I think they meet every second Tuesday at a month if I'm correct. But why, they, they have paperwork and obviously just, you can imagine being a police officer today, what they have to know, what they have to do. Uh, it's no easy thing for, uh, but they are a professional bunch. Now, the day before, we had a couple of break-ins, one down 301, and that same morning, I was walking through the post office, and I know that they broke the glass on a store downtown. Uh, call them by that afternoon. And, um, generally they do. They do a fine job on, I think them for all they do. Um, y'all remember me talking about a hotel? I think one of the big needs that the city of Dillon has. Um, I had two leads on it. I had one from a fellow from Florence called me back, said, Todd, that guy is right in the middle of building three or four locations now. I said, I understand, appreciate him at least, uh, taking your call and talking to him about Dillon. Then I got an idea about Loves, that Loves is in the hospitality business. Loves called me back twice. And they are coming to town either the 22nd or 23rd. Uh, got him Kevin McCarthy, who is part of their hospitality and leisure, part of their business. We're putting him up for tonight, so he'll be here in this month surveying Dillon, uh, see what opportunities they might have for them in the city. Um, we think there's a tremendous opportunity therefore. So I look forward to hosting him and meeting Mr. McCarthy later in this month. Last week met with a group from the hospital, thought, uh, kind of doing a community assessment at the hospital. Uh, glad to hear what I've heard from the hospital, their commitment here, not only that, but what they're wanting to do, to make an outreach for the people in our community from the standpoint of what hospital can do to be a better facility and, and serve the people that wear a plant right here on, uh, in our area. That's good news, uh, because there are quite a few communities paralleling us that doesn't really have a hospital anymore. It's such a huge, huge part of any community from any standpoint. But I thought that meeting went very well. I've been kind of hit with this before. Benny, you wanna update us on the restaurant that I just constantly get called on out there? I think now you, you probably got some concrete things that you can say.
Yes, sir. Um, this is on the cookout restaurant on Rafford Little Boy. The general contractor has, um, came and applied for the building permit, and, um, they're ready to start building, um, the cookout restaurant pending, uh, receipt of a demolition permit from D H A. Um, we're looking for that D H A permit to be in our office by Wednesday by close of business, if everything goes well. And, uh, should everything goes well, we issue the demolition permit to the contractor. Then that way, the demolition contractor can demolish the old Shoney's building, and the general contractor can then begin construction. So we excited about that. Um, contractors are excited, the subcontractors are excited, everybody's excited. D H A just, we're waiting on D H A. And so...
When was that building built?
Um, when was it built?
Yeah, I mean, is that, that's my old construction.
It's probably, uh, it's probably almost 20 years old.
Oh, we say.
It shouldn't have a lot of, they shouldn't have it.
Mm, yes.
Should, should, oh, yeah.
Thank you, Benny. It's nice to get a vacant deal like this building over here. There, right over there. You know, 106 grand. Anyway, to keep, it's a vacant building coming down, it's gonna be occupied by a great restaurant. The good thing about the cookout, it's for our community, is a lot of young kids like to go there, out here. Be in 94 seats for what their plans are, they'll have a place to go, order something, hang out, and kind of know where your children are. Um, Main Street, um, we did have another meeting probably two, three weeks ago. Well, pending still. Main Street's, um, just, the plans are, are really picking up on Main Street. You had one grand opening I went to about two weeks ago, uh, it's called, uh, what do you want to call it? Twice as nice. Uh, that's beside the old Evans Pharmacy with, and the, uh, the clothing store Highlights. Uh, Mr. Dudley Suley, he owns that building, it's a large building, he renovated it. He's got slowed down like many of us the other year, the property was flooded. But he did a great job with that building, and picking with it, and said, you got a little early on it. He told them about the grants and so forth. I did mention to him about the preservation tax credit, and at time last month, I commented that all three entities, the city, the county, and the school district has passed that. Well, I was wrong. Uh, the city and the school district passed. County has not passed that yet. I was told they would, I was sure they would, but I don't, I don't, not that I don't trust them, but I don't take stuff like that, telling another business, I'm gonna have to put his money back in downtown without actually seeing that pass, and not by word of mouth. So I hope they'll do it, they say they'll do it, and then we'll have all three, which will make it a much better deal for the property owner coming into our area. It's just, again, another leg on the stool. Uh, one of those multifaceted approach to Main Street that I took an article the other day, and I've kind of gotten obsessed with Main Street, um, of what to do. This article's real good, and I was glad to see we're already doing a lot of things. It's called a multifaceted approach to financing downtown revitalization. Um, it used to be you could rely on grants, and you really can't anymore, because one thing, grants are too cumbersome, and they're slow to get done. The time, the time you ever get one, it may be two, three years down the road, and you just lose focus. So if they are grant funding opportunities, I guess from a variety of, you know, state, local, federal grants, but trying to look for any one big grant, and it really isn't out there. They talked about private funding, uh, which we're doing some of. Um, funding from municipalities, that's what we are doing, uh, with the facade grant. The, uh, grants to fix up the building that we passed, such a huge part of downtown revitalization. The municipalities will come in and think that the council are passing that and seeing the need for it. Um, the other things, municipality-owned assets, which I don't think we have really any municipality-owned assets on Main Street, but I'm gonna give you a heads up, I called Bert last week. The tax sale on that condemned property beside this Twice as Nice is probably coming up in November, sometime late fall. I can't imagine somebody buying that privately. I'm just gonna ask the council to be ready to go get it.
How much?
Well, it's gonna be kind of like an auction, I mean, you, you...
What's the taxes owed on that?
Probably come that time, less than 3 grand.
I'm not worried about the taxes, I'm worried about the cleanup costs, if anything. That's the, that's the life of buildings, full of asbestos, probably so.
But my thing about it is, is the person who went and got it at the auction, and they're waiting for the year and one day, and can we ask them once they get the property in their hands, because they've been waiting on it for a year and one day? Um, can we push the issue to them clean up the property with us tearing it down?
Don't know that anybody has done that.
Nobody hasn't done that.
They hadn't three months ago. We called someone to give them a heads up if they were in arrested. He was gone, but I don't know if he ever went.
Thanks.
So it, it may be...
What's the square footage? How's it compare to what we tore down?
It's the size of that Highlights building, the clothing store.
When you figure it is, probably 150 at the most feet. Not even quite that, but, and then maybe 75 feet, 50 feet wide. But then you two stories too.
But it has to be demolished?
Well, it doesn't have to be, I mean, somebody can either demolish it and rebuild back there, or just demolish it, one of the two. It can't, you know, based on our ordinance, you know, it is condemned. Um, and if it's not brought back to code, either the owner or, or the city tears it down, or through a contractor, we tear it down, the city. So, I mean, whether or not somebody wants to spend the money to bring it back to code, and I have no clue what's, what needs to be done there on the inside, but from the outside, before we spent a little money to make it safe for pedestrians down the sidewalk, the, the front windows at the top were falling out. I mean, the window seals were coming out, so I'd imagine there's a good bit of water damage in that building. And we know probably from downstairs due to the hurricane, because Mr. Suley, that's the reason Twice as Nice closed, so you know that was still, there a problem there. And then upstairs, I'm assuming there were leaks, I don't know that.
I walked by there, looked through it, half the, half the second story's down. It's, it's gone, it's, it's totally gone. Um, I'm just saying the city needs to be prepared, because would you buy it? All you're gonna go buy is something you got to demo, okay? Then you gotta look at who's gonna demo, you gotta do an evaluation on it. I asked Bert to kind of get a cost from somebody locally, uh, what we're looking at, just to be ready.
But you're asking, I'm gonna make sure I'm gonna say, Benny, you're asking us to go to the auction sale, when it comes up, we take ownership of it, and we have to wait another year and a day because the owner who owns the property has a chance to get his property back.
We're in that year now.
Yeah, I don't think it does any...
No, it don't do it any...
Yeah, I don't think so.
No, it's from the David's sale, I mean, fine.
Oh, is it? Okay. So if somebody didn't buy it last year, it goes for another year.
So November, we gotta wait another year?
If somebody hadn't purchased it.
Okay, well, that's what I'm talking, the city...
If they purchase it at, at county sale, they don't get a deed for it for one year later.
I thought the, well, I was mistaken, I thought they had a year to go, a year from the date we put it up for sale to buy it back, if somebody were to buy it. So a condemned building's gonna basically stay on Main Street for two years?
Well, it could, or we could, we could...
I don't know about the condemnation part of it, ma'am.
Now, we could go ahead...
It's on the title of the letter.
Well, if you... We could go ahead and, and we've sent letters for condemnation. Now, mind you, we get to track the owner down, um, and Jack would have to give us the legal advice on that at the end, but, you know, we could spend the money and hire someone to tear it down, and then we take that, whatever that cost is, we pay it, and they put a lien on that property. Without us owning it. But, you know, if the property's ever sold, or, or whatever...
Yeah, the last time we got into that, we thought we were gonna get out for about 20 grand, and we ended up paying 106...
Well, that's because we did it ourselves, and it would have to be done, we learned that lesson.
You know, we learned that lesson, and this is the problem with guys, we can't tear a building down, and another building's gotta be waiting to tear it down a year later. We can't tear it down in the same block.
In the same block.
But I don't understand how these other municipalities, if you go to Florence, they're tearing them down left and right.
And they may have gone and done what they're supposed to do as far as spending money and having these buildings tested. We don't do that.
Still, that ain't demolishing my crates.
Understand, and we would be too, if somebody had called.
I understand what you're saying, but I mean, in order to progress...
Yeah, but I...
I don't want just one, one building, then you gotta wait another year to tear another...
No, we don't have to, we don't have to.
So...
We can go and do it, and take the chance of being fine or, or, or do it right, and you've got to have those buildings tested for asbestos.
Right, I understand all that, but I'm just saying...
And why spend that money? Don't know how much that money would be. But that's left to y'all, if y'all wanna do it.
I don't wanna get off subject, I'm sorry.
Well, back to that money, can you use the, um, the two cent money? I know that thing very good role on the meaning of its tourism, but you are trying to drive tourism on...
Well, yeah, you probably could, you probably could, um, 'cause it could be tourism-related. Maybe splitting hairs, but it is tourism-related, 'cause you want to drive people, not only locals, but outsiders to your downtown.
Why that building, this ordinance, to me, it's got to be gone the quickest we can do it. Um, there's, my next part was, I've got an interest on downtown apartments too, in, in the vicinity of, vicinity of that area. I doubt that'll fly with that building's look at right now. But we'll get to that one though.
One last point, with the owner owning the building right now, we can try to find him.
We found a person by that name, and think that's who it is, and he said, ah, ain't he? Just people out watching, or watching.
And, well, we can press the issue that they get their building up the codes and everything, we know that's never gonna happen, because it's gonna cost so much money. How, how is it that we could get him to let us get the building? I mean, instead of waiting so much longer to do so?
John, there's two different things that I think we're talking about. There's one thing about the person advising the tax sale...
Right.
Having to wait the one year to get the deed to the property.
Right.
Tearing the building down under our condemnation process is a different one.
Okay, so how much time are we looking at if we, you know, do the condemnation?
We're looking for the condemnation, we can demolish the building now.
Yeah. We can do it now?
Yeah.
Personally, we'd rather do that than buy it.
Well, I would think so too, I mean, I just, we've been prolonged this...
Yeah, I would, I would... We could possibly get him a ticket to it.
I wouldn't want us to own it, right?
I agree with you totally on that.
We're not into real estate.
Well, we aren't, we aren't near to that point yet, and... Something's gotta go by. Um, well, anyway, they're talking about municipal, municipal-owned assets, uh, contributions from private sector firms, for grants and gifts. Uh, that, that's picking up a little bit on smaller things from corporations in the area, not specifically downtown, but we got, we picked up stuff on there. Individual donations, you know, we talked about Lake City with that, I don't, I don't feel that's happening for Dillon. Um, profit D generating projects, historic preservation tax credits is a big deal, we're doing that, and doing it. Uh, low-income housing tax credits for apartment houses, if you want to target the low-income. The people I've heard from were more interested from a private setting. Long guarantees, but anyway, it was very good, and, um, I was glad to see that we as council are already doing many of these things that are, that are starting to work for us. Um, and, and last thing, with my little show Down Home Dillon, it's been a pleasure to host. The prior month, I had Mr. Wendell Oakright with Sydney's, kind of wanted him on there for five minutes, since he puts so much money into the restaurant here. And I thought I'd give the opportunity for the entire house, they, uh, they did a renovation, and they, the second renovation, uh, for restaurant, they hired a new manager, so I brought him on for 10 minutes, very good. Anybody else interested, I'd be glad to try to fit you in on these shows, but I wanted to start in the immediate area of Main Street, and because they have made investment in our food, we're in the business of all Main Street right off of Main Street. And that right now is...
I left on your desk in front of you a three-page letter from subcontractor Department of Transportation last month, that was discussing about doing a traffic study at North Eighth Avenue and Cleveland Street, and East Main and Fourth Avenue. Um, this letter dated July 25th came in the mail today, and just in summary, what they're recommending that they will do at Cleveland and Eighth Avenue is the department will remark the stop limit lines on Cleveland, replace the 30-inch stop sign with larger 48-inch stop signs. They will also, stop head warning signs will also be installed on Cleveland Street as it approaches Eighth Avenue. Now, will that solve the issue of people running those stop signs? I don't know, but it's got to help. Uh, it's also states another information on the second page about the traffic volume and accident history at that intersection over the last three or four years. Um, there were five accidents that were reported beginning January 2014 to December of 2016. And then the second request was East Main and Fourth Avenue. As it states in the letter, the department will mark two to five feet wide skid lines, not sure what skid lines are, on Main Street through the intersection. These lines should be better informed motorists on Fourth Avenue approaching of the location as a travel lanes on Main Street. It is recommended that the city restrict parking in front of the stop sign on Fourth Avenue as it approaches distance of 30 feet. I rode by there today, we do not have parking on Fourth Avenue, no mark signs that there were cars parked there. So that is what DOT has come back and said they would do with those two intersections. So we'll see how that works out. Second thing I have, last week, I believe Benny's staff walked Main Street and talked some of the business owners or, or some of the folks that run the businesses on Main Street, just to let them know about the new ordinance we have on appearance for the buildings on Main, along with the Uptit Grant, and what kind of ideas that he gave them on what may need to be done at your building. Based on this conversation with me today, we have positive feedback from most of the folks that he has talked to. Now, we haven't talked to everyone face-to-face, but they're doing that on a weekly basis, just walking Main Street, surveying the buildings, to get an idea of what needs to be done, and let these folks know, here's what you need to do to stay in compliance, and here how we may be able to help you. So the business owners or the businesses are being notified to what's happening and what our goals are. Also left on your desk, four photographs of a building on North MacArthur Avenue and Harrison Street. This building is owned by Mr. A.B. Jordan. He has talked with me for over the last month or so about trees blocking the sign for this business that rents from him. Bert and I looked at them, and we took one tree out because it was diseased, the other tree's in good shape, one of the better trees that we have. Mr. Jordan called me back two weeks ago and wanted to know if I'd take the other tree out, and I told him I wasn't at the, didn't have the authority really to take that out, one, because it's not diseased. So I went today and looked at the, the tree and, and MacArthur Avenue, and took pictures, and pretty much gonna leave it to you folks as council members to say whether or not you wanna start cutting down trees, because they're blocking the signs or not blocking the signs. The first picture, which is this one, it's directly across the street standing at the railroad tracks. The second picture is a quarter of a block south of the building, and you can see the sign on the building. The third picture is pulling into a parking lot, which blocks the sign, but that tree is in front of another business. And then the fourth building is, actually, if you got out of that parking spot, got out of your car, you can see the sign of that business.
Looking for, uh, looking for...
I'm looking for directions.
Right now, I'm, I'm looking for directions. Alright. Well, I'm, I'm on that street, and I know what Lynn's talking about, and I walked down there, so I seen it firsthand, and to cut a tree down, which made it much better, much better, and I see no need to cut the second. And I probably put my, self in his position if it were my business, and I could see the sign quite just fine.
Well, I mean, I would, I personally might be able to go down and look at it, I mean, I see your pictures, um, that's my perspective, how I feel about it. Um, I'm not able to vote on it tonight, and, um, you know, give you more detailed information next meeting.
That's fine, you may all want to do that.
That's the tree he would like for us to remove, which would be, it's kind of lined up to the front door of that building on the left side of the building, which is the old Chamber of Commerce building many years ago, and then, was the Dillon Herald on that building? Betsy? Yeah, at one time, so, I mean, that's fine.
We have these gray murals all up and down the blocks, right?
Yes, most of them are gray, yeah, and El Main Street, yes.
But is this a gray mur...
No, ma'am, that is a, what is that tree, Bert? Zelcova? A zelcova. It doesn't bloom, it just has green leaves.
Okay, well, y'all take a look at it. We don't have to wait the next week, y'all can take a look at it and call them and...
Water tank status, spoke with engineers today on our new water tank. As I told you, I think last month, that the tank is up in the air, and it's completed as far as the shell. We're now waiting on the painting contractors, and also the completion of tying in of the new water lines that go to that, and best guess right now, we're four to six weeks out before that is completely painted well.
What are you gonna think of the water tower?
It's gonna be a green leaves, kind of blend in with the trees out there at the park, and then a white top, the tank itself, will be white with Dillon logo and sports complex on it. Kind of make it blend in with that, because the water treatment plant itself has a green roof, uh, building over the park is green, so we're trying to blend all of it together. Fire department roof is in the process of being replaced, they started it probably two weeks ago, but last week, Chief Bailey, you here? Did that work today?
Well, it hasn't worked on the last week, I talked to him today, he said that he knew that it passed rain.
I talked to him today, he said that it's been raining and in the process of tearing off, and they don't do anything to it. I don't think it's our bad news.
Alright, so we're in the process of replacing that.
What was asked of the cost on that?
About $30,000.
$30,000?
The mayor and I talked last week, and really hadn't thought much about it, and I don't think either of you or maybe none of you on council have either. You know, we've got solar eclipse happening Monday. I really hadn't thought anything about the solar eclipse. We're not in the total solar eclipse area, however, we are in a partial, anywhere from 98% to 99% of the sun will be covered during some part of the afternoon pending cloud cover, of whether you can see it or not. But due to the schools are letting out roughly 11:00, 11:30 on Monday, there's a possibility we'll probably close our offices and non-emergency personnel will leave at 12 that day. And the reasoning is, one, we don't supply our employees with any kind of glasses in case they make a mistake and looked up. We hope they would not do that whether they're at work or whether at home, but I think it's been our best interest from a safety standpoint that we shut down Monday at noon, just the non-emergency personnel, we go home, the emergency personnel will stay on staff during their regular duty hours. Chief Lane and I talked today, we're gonna bring in another shift during that time, because we just don't know what's gonna happen. I think many of us have been through an eclipse. When we were, last one, I remember I was a small boy. Don't remember all of it, but it's just something that I think from a safety standpoint we probably need to do. Fizied that Monday on picking up trash residential, we got that handled, we're gonna want two trucks on Monday to take care of it, make sure we get done by lunchtime, and then we'll be back on Tuesday morning. Anybody got any concerns or?
Well, your second shift, how long are you planning on bringing them in for us to do?
They'll probably come in from 12 till about four or five, about five hours.
And the non-essential house on pay, we just gonna take our vacation time?
Just be, just be like any other weather event, whether it's a snow day or hurricane day or something like that, unless y'all wanna do something different. It basically would be some departments, it'd be four hours off, but it'd be four hours off for all of us that will be closed, close its way in.
Well, I think the schools may be letting them off after the day, so I think you're making the right call by letting them off after that day.
You all need to do it on that?
Do it?
I don't know.
Don't?
So if you can say it one more time since we on teaching.
From 12 o'clock on Monday, we will close all offices and non-essential emergency personnel, i.e. fire department, police department. Those folks will work other than the office staff. Well, the wellness center will close, golf course will close. We'll probably open the wellness center back up at 5:00 at evening on Monday. Chief, you have any introductions for tonight?
I do. Tonight we have Lance Corporal Daniel Flane, she is here, she represents our patrol division. She is newly hired, she comes to us with a lot of experience and we are very excited to have her. She would just let you know she was, really had a big hand in our cookout cops and did a lot to help us out with that. Welcome, Corporal.
One last thing I failed to mention, you brought it up earlier, Mayor, about our World Series team, there will be a hot dog hamburger supper at the Wellness Center Thursday starting at 6:00. Council has invited to go out and eat a hamburger and hot dog with these World Series champions.
Are you planning on doing a ring ceremony with them, or you gonna get them rings or?
We had a ball rings for the previous teams. Everybody done it, I think we've given them keys to the city, what we've done previously. We've had, what is this, our fourth, third or fourth one? Fourth one, we had two last year. That's all I have.
Oh yeah?
Maggie?
Hey, do you have any more people with grants yet, besides Vance?
Well, you do have one.
Jordan.
Apply for the UPIT grant, he started, he's about to come get the paperwork, so that won't be more. How many facade have we got, two or three?
Jordan and Stephanie, that's it.
It's two.
Two.
And one who applied for the bigger. Well, y'all, they can pass it through, I'll get it. Anything else?
No.
Maggie set me up with a guy in Dartmouth about up there on housing on Main Street. Citizen support, anything, anybody have out there to bring your attention?
Yes.
Yes, may I speak, sir?
Give your name.
My name is Howard Perry and I am a member of Moss Hill Baptist Church in 44 South Fourth Avenue. And the concern that we have is when it rains, we have problems drains. When it rains, it is probably whatever, and when people go into the church, you know, we're gonna walk in water. And it's very difficult when we have a funeral that time, it's just constantly walking in water. I'd like to make a suggestion is to, maybe if we get a range land put behind the church and the ditch cleaned out, then that would help us.
Where are you looking?
44 South Fourth Avenue, that's with the church guard.
Bert, you know where he's?
Yes, sir.
You wanna get with him after the meeting or next day or two, see what he's got, what issue he's got there?
We also have some pictures, we can show you.
Hey, it would be better if you get with Bert Rogers, he handles that, he'll look at your situation, see if anything we can do.
I would like to add to that. I'm a member of that church, Mayor. And not only does the water sit there, Bert, but it floods the church out, floods our church. We have a problem with that too. And we've been dealing with it, they've been, I've recently come back to the church, that's where my mother was, and it's very difficult, as he says, and to walk there, you can't hardly walk in there, even though a little rain, we had this, it's just stands there, it's like unbelievable. And the ditch behind it hasn't been cleaned. So we would like for someone to do something about it.
Now, I brought that issue up, what's the four? We're going in there for them?
You did?
Yeah, we've looked at it several, on several occasions, the area is so flat in front of the church, the only way to move the water, you'd have to put a drain in, you know, to pipe it down. And we did clean the ditch behind the church, probably been about three months ago.
Well, the ditch behind the church is not a problem, it's that.
Right.
There's the, the drains usually runs down in front of the church and then parallel to East Hudson Street.
Right.
That part of ditch has been cleaned out. And that's what I have on the pictures. It's so compact and so clotted that the water has nowhere to go. And even though, just yesterday with 30 minutes of rain, the pictures I got here, we got more, it looks like, almost like six inches of water that just sat in front of the church just for 30 minutes of rain. And so just imagine what it is when it rains, you know, overnight for a long period of time. So water has nowhere to go, it just sits there. And it, you know, it recedes very slowly. So I showed you pictures.
I've seen it, I know.
Do you get it back over there each week?
We scrape, you know, in front of the church, down to the beach, we tried to level out in front of the, it's just so flat that, you know, the only way to fix it would be put a drain in.
We'll see.
Is that something the city or is it something the state problem?
We'll probably end up having to deal with ourselves. We'll get the state to look at it. But if it's, but there's not enough fall to get through that ditch.
Where's that water eventually go?
It just. That's a bridge canal.
There's a big canal behind the church and the water.
Where's the canal part of the church? Where's it supposed to be?
Well, the canal ends in Maple Swamp. That's where it is.
Also, what goes underneath the church?
Yeah, they got a bad, the church is kind of in a low area and water stands under their church, have to pump it out from under the church.
I've been to the state.
I've been in church and looked, under the church and everything.
What's the state telling us?
They're telling me it's the city.
Well, I can't even make this decision. Well, we can, we can get the city manager and the guy by there, Bert Rogers, the service guy, let's give it to state and see what Mitch Carter can do.
And one other thing since I'm here, we were talking about, I have been here several times about West Cleveland Street, Mayor. And Mr. Glenn has, we've talked, I had him to come out, but there was, there's an apartment building that was built on Main Street across from the ballpark, Mr. Washington and Ms. Manning. And this man that built that left a big compost of dirt. It's taller than the apartment buildings and it's just sitting there. And there, he carved out something like a trench and it was supposed to be beautified and it's the ugliest trench I've ever seen. Grass, just like he threw it to the side and left. And I've had the call to have the grass cut, I mean, it's taller than me. And I don't know why we would have to deal with that. And he came, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know who purchased the land, Mr. Jen Lightburn, I don't like that because it adds to my problem, because that ditch runs parallel to my home. And we have to treat the grass with our own money and that ditch to keep the mosquitoes and snakes at bay. And that's not fair. And I have been here at least five times about that. And I've gone to several people, I've went to the county, I was sent back here and what pricked me just now when he said, when Deacon Perry said that he had been to the state, you know, you're carrying me around in a circle and I would like for someone to handle that, not me coming back and forth. I was told so many things and I would like to have that done, something done.
Look at it, I mean, you'll see if there's our pliability on it. Generally, if there's not, and if the city can do it, they'll do it. I know they do. Being the owners he's talking about, where it is managed and stuff. See what you can do if it's on the property owner or whoever.
I went over there two weeks ago, where was, where was the dirt pile?
It's across that ditch, it's a peach, it's tallest.
I didn't, because I saw where you and I were talking about the pile.
Right, that pile.
We're taking that water line out and putting in a new one, we're gonna go up under the ditch, so that'll keep people from walking across.
Okay.
And then I saw the opening of the ditch that they did coming from their property to that canal.
Right.
And I don't know what we can do there. I mean, as far as a compost pile, we can, we can handle something like that, but as far as the ditch opening, I don't know that there's anything that we can do.
About his ditch opening, okay, what about the ditch that runs parallel?
Well, I mean, there's some which we can handle there, other than, like I said, we can take that water line, we're gonna relocate it up underneath the ditch. But you can't dig the ditch out anymore. If you dig it out anymore, the water's not gonna go downstream like it should. But, you know, we should do a better job if we're not doing it, keeping it clean up and buried. Such as, because there's been times we've taken out bicycles, grocery carts, grills, and we've taken out everything but a car, I believe.
A body.
Yeah. But we'll look at it again and at least see if we can get their apartment complex owners to do something on the, what do you call them, compost.
Well, it is compost, so that ditch is, is the, I don't know.
Anybody else? All right, nothing else unfinished business? We have none. New business, order 1708 of Menzoni Matt from this Denver Hardwick, a property at 401 East Wilson Street from a B4 to an R7. If that was or is a daycare, we want to put it back to residential.
How many questions?
On there.
I suppose. Council member reports for Ella. I don't want to take too much time, but we last, last week we had abbreviated meetings and I had some things I wanted to ask Ms. Janet. So I'll try to make it real quick. Ms. Janet, you got on here on the hospitality, you got on here for, I guess it's the wellness center. It's the deficit, we run the wellness center and you got to take it out sometime in November? Make sure I'm telling you right, because I may have put it wrong. 100,000, 100,000, 2,000, that's excess from the general fund?
What we do is, after the audit is complete, then I take it out there.
Right, but how did you come up with the 1,000, 2,000, what I'm trying to figure out?
Well, I take, I take all my numbers to come out of what.
You tell what the revenue was for the wellness center?
Right, right.
Versus the deficit?
And why it's gonna be left out of it, when we may not use all that.
The golf course, I hadn't said much about the golf course, but this council is aware that in nine months or shorter than that, we got to make a decision if we're gonna renew the lease or if we're gonna get out the golf course. We're pushing $900,000 in the golf course now, a waste of money. That's the way I look at it. So I think it's time, you know, we be preparing and making this decision. I went to these other complexes this past month with the World Series team, they're beautiful, Harpsville, Sulter, and I would love to see, the mayor made a comment about the facilities, we, if we could take some of that money and put it into the complexes, they draw a crowd, there's a lot of people playing the softball. So I really, you know, think we need to be looking at that more forward. Also, I'd like to also meet to, the mayor talked about the hospital, the hospital, there's some small communities that are losing their hospitals. I think we have a great facility or hospital, we just expanded our ER department not long ago, we're doing something at OB-GYN across from Dr. Wallace's office. We're doing great things with the hospital and I just want to let the hospital know if I come in and if we're doing what they're doing. Also the cinnamons, the plaza cinnamons, that's a great thing for the young kids to be able to take advantage of. I don't know the guy personally, but I would just like to tell him the great job that he's doing as far as getting movies in here for the families to be able to take part in. Lastly, I want to go back to the wellness center because, Ben, I want to ask you a question. Looking at the janitorial supplies, you allotted $20,000 last year. We spent $22,000 just in janitorial supplies. Also, the buildings and grounds, I don't know, I haven't asked the question, we allotted 15,000 and we spent 38,000.
You looking at last year's budget?
Yep.
I don't have that in front of me.
Alright, and then.
Probably had air conditioning with issues.
Bathroom issues.
We had two or three water leaks in the wellness, when I say water leaks, not from rain, but actual water lines in the bathroom.
And we talked about equipment repairs two or three months ago. We had $21,000 worth of repairs, we only allocated $4,000. So we did 17,000.
Some of that was replacement that we gave last year, if I'm not mistaken.
So that's what I'm trying to get to, the overall deficit that we have in the wellness center, if we could try to eliminate some of this, it would bring the deficit down tremendously. I mean, you're looking at 60,000, well, you got to have janitorial supplies, $20,000 worth of janitorial.
Well, not just, I mean, it's just one category, that could be janitorial supplies, that could be towels that we purchase.
We turn the towels in, we wash them, we don't, they're taking our facility.
Yeah, but they don't, those towels don't last, I mean, but yeah, we probably spend close to 20,000 in janitorial, remember now, we've got shoes, 20 stalls.
I mean, that just seems like that's really an astronomical move, janitorial supply, but I mean, you're talking about towels and. But I mean, you're talking about towels and stuff like that, so I mean, I don't know. It's a little more expensive.
Yeah, that's cleaning supplies for the building. I guess add the wash, the wipes, yes, in the, in the, in the facility. I mean, that's, I'll get it broken down, let you, I'll show you.
Well, it just stood out to me that we had so much cost in janitorial supplies and, you know, the buildings and grounds and the repairs, and that's a lot of money and then free little ledger items, you know.
So all the weight, the extra weights and stuff we bought, Bert, you think that? That could be, I don't know if we put it there or not. That was about fifteen to twenty thousand in the golf new equipment last year.
But it was, I thought that came out the hospitality.
Well, it's gone to one of those line items. It's gone to one of those line items. Oh, and it comes strictly out of the hospitality.
Well, my last claim, Mary, is that the accommodations tax. I don't, I see it on the last year ending budget, we had a lot more money than what we distributed. I don't see it on this, this ledger here now that you just sent out to us. The twenty-nine thousand dollars that we had extra?
It would be in the. Yeah, but we had, we had additional money, which would be in the actual account balance, not on the.
But it's not showing different, it's showing the three thousand dollar difference from what last month was distributed.
What, which hospitality?
Oh, it's the accommodations tax.
Two percent money, three percent money, or?
That's just the accommodations.
Accommodation.
Full piece of accommodations tax.
All right, right now, we showing a budget of fifty-six thousand dollars. Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
Okay.
But I'm also looking at June thirtieth end month.
Yeah, we don't have that in front of us, so I don't. And what is that show?
It's showing twenty-nine thousand dollars more.
Can I?
Yeah, maybe you can explain that to me. Explain that to me, because this, this month's ledger, we're not, it's not showing that.
Here. All right, we budgeted, that's revenue, we budgeted fifty-six thousand in last year's budget. We brought in eighty-five thousand. So that's the twenty thousand, twenty-nine. And we spent, how much did we go out with, do you remember?
We spent everything except four thousand and some odders. What'd you show on your budget now?
All right.
That's the remaining balance.
We spent eighty-one thousand of that eighty-five thousand during the year.
We're only giving out fifty-six thousand.
What it is, general fund gets five percent. Okay, but the chamber gets thirty percent of all the revenue that comes in. General fund goes back and gets the first twenty-five thousand that is allocated in July. Twenty-five thousand plus the five percent goes to general fund. Any funds after then is five percent, thirty percent for the chamber and sixty-five percent for the committee that, you know, that y'all have approved. And we gave out thirty-five thousand, I think thirty-five thousand in June. So that brings our total down to four thousand some dollars.
But what I'm saying though, we weren't gonna give out the whole thirty-five thousand. Because it's showing right here negative fourteen thousand, that means you got money left over. And if you look, I'm not seeing what you're saying. It's just confusing to me if the balance now is forty-one thousand you're showing for this month. Last month it was thirty-eight thousand.
It's not forty-one thousand. What it is, we get a check in and I have to record it due from the state. That's why I record that money. Each, each, each year I have to record it. So no, we don't have forty-one thousand in there. We've got four thousand and some odd dollars in there right now.
Four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars.
Right, look at your check in there, look at your check.
I see what you got here, the revenues versus the expenses, it does four thousand. But the current fund balance is what I'm seeing, so even though it's not a tracker number.
That's right, I have to record it every year because we don't know how much we're getting in. And once I get it in, I have to record it back to June the thirtieth because we don't get it to July.
So can you tell me how much money the theater got this year? Because they normally give you twenty thousand dollars for our accommodation committee.
I don't remember.
Did they get more than that?
No, not.
What you really ought to do is just set the time instead of doing it right now. Because it's just if you. In June now, we.
Well, they understand what I'm saying.
In June, we gave you a, the disbursement of what? Those that applied for the money that y'all voted on in June to give them?
Right.
I don't remember what the theater got. But we also told you at that time that the J.B. Martin School Foundation withdrew there.
I understand that. That's what left the four thousand.
Right, yes, yes, that was all, that's why the balance was left in there.
So there was, was there three or four?
There was three. The theater got twenty and Recreation got five thousand and the PD Tourism got ten thousand. That's your thirty-five thousand. Yeah, and that's what was left. And you got to spend the money or either send it back to the state. And there's only a certain amount that we can apply that money to.
Johnny, I want to talk about hospital minutes too. I've represented Dillon County for over ten years under the Cloud Health Board trustees. We take our hospital for granted and we are just so blessed in Dillon to have an organization like McClow that's committed to keeping healthcare in rural communities like this. A lot of communities around us have lost their hospitals such as Bennett's. And McClow has made every effort to try to maintain the hospital here. We've got great doctors, we've got a great hospital and with the advantage of having a system where we can refer to Florence if we have to. But McClow's been a, has been a true blessing for our community. And as we look to recruit new industry and new businesses, hotels, restaurants in Dillon, that's one of the first things I look at is the hospital system. So please don't take that hospital for granted. We're blessed to have them. The other thing is, I just wanted to make a comment. The mayor does such a good job of representing our city. He did a television interview, I think it was on TV thirteen last week. It was excellent and talking about the downtown area. The guy should do a great job as a spokesman and representative of this city. We thank you for all the time he put into that. And I have one question. We got traffic studies on, from DOT on these two other intersections. Do they look at the median on Main Street?
Well, I had talked to them about that and they, that is strictly our call, the city's call. And I have talked with an engineering firm to look at it, to give us a cost estimate because it'd have to be, not just a cost estimate, but a design plan that DOT has to sign off on. So I'm waiting on that.
Benny, what we talked about on Mark Hill King and Washington Street. Did you get back on with them, did they ever get on it back?
Is it combinations or?
Well, combinations, clean up with that Mark Hill King place I was talking about. And one of Washington's, one of Kings.
I'll talk to you after the meeting. Um, about the golf course, this year, our church sponsor got a tournament that raised twenty or twenty-two thousand dollars. I don't know the exact numbers, the Red Cross. All that money goes to the Red Cross, stays here for the run down victims. In the fall last year, PD Coalition had a golf tournament, raised about nine thousand dollars. That stays in Dillon County. I think that probably the prudent thing is, is let's, let's go forward with buying the golf course, renegotiating with Mr. Johnson with the price. And then we give grant money to help us with those costs. Right now, on short-term lease, we can't, we can't give grant money. That's all I have. Benny, the last meeting, we discussed our house down Main Street. What is the progress going, how, where are we at with it?
We're still waiting for the contractor to start construction of the house.
And he's at no, anyway, we can push it up a little bit. We more people ask him, how long is it gonna look like that, some of the neighbors on us.
I'll talk to him and try to expedite it.
That's all I have.
Um, or whoever swam over, the mosquito spray truck that comes around, it would have a set time because I had stopped in my mailbox and he came past, I guess it just blew the mosquito smoke. Yeah, I don't know what that is. Would not like to.
Run into the house. That's what I do. It's usually right at dark. I mean, and as far as the schedule, I think we do it, what, two or three times a week? Then we out. Twice, one side of town and then the other side of town pending on rain. Uh, will it kill you? I'm not gonna sit here and tell you it will or it won't. Only if you're pissed.
The funniest thing I've met, I've been hearing on the news about the news port explorers having that cover and that shot coming into, do we have any of those?
We have two of them and we have, we have looked into it. We are, we are in that, we have, our two are in that year range. We are, we are looking at some carbon dioxide detectors for the rest of the year.
Regarding ditch cutting, because I've had the one there in my house cut, I think, all this year and, you know, with those large canal ditches with snakes, you know. I would like to have that, you know, ditch cut. That's all I have.
I got one more thing I need to talk, with the mural that we talked about several months ago. What are we doing about that?
I don't do reliving at this point in time. I know there was a push by some of, some residents trying to get some information. But I think that would be one of those that council needs to decide what they would like to have on. Well, one, the business owner or the building owner has to.
Agree. He's in agree.
Okay. And then two, somebody's got to say what's gonna be there. And then what the cost is gonna be, if the city's paying the cost or the new downtown association paying the cost.
Can you look into the guy that done it the last time and see what kind of cost estimate it would be to get it?
I think they called him and I don't know that, I'll find out. I don't know of him, I remember him, but I think past Mayor McIntyre has, she was gonna talk to him to see if he would be interested in doing something. But I think you as a group or somebody needs to come up with what needs to be on that wall if we can do something. Some people like the old ones, some people definitely. But I think that y'all as a group, you need to make that decision. Yes, y'all do. But I will, I will find out in a while, baby.
So you're saying you're not agreeing with us?
I'm, I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
Well, you made a summary mark.
Y'all are, I mean, I got money in the pool, I'm not so worried about you.
You're part of this council, you're like we.
Johnny had to told you I'm not.